Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the last meeting of the year for the year 2017 in the Bellingham City Council. The Bellingham City Council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Meetings Act. I have one announcement, and that is that the City Council's annual reorganization meeting will take place on Monday, January 8th. That includes a discussion at 1:00 PM in the Mayor's Boardroom, and then we will reconvene in the evening at 7:00 PM for swearing-in ceremony. So on Monday, January 8th, the Committee as a whole, since of all seven elected City Council members, will meet in the Mayor's Boardroom. That's where we assign for the next year who will be the Council President, the President pro tem, and the Mayor pro tem, and other committee assignments. And then we'll have a swearing-in ceremony in the evening. The newly-elected or re-elected members of the City Council will be Pinky Vargas, Jean Knutson, Roxanne Murphy, and myself. The taking of the oath actually is ceremonial, but we look forward to it. And lastly, because the folks of the January 8th meeting will be on council reorganization, we probably will not have any regular city business brought forward that afternoon on January 8th, unless that matter is of a time-sensitive nature. So we may actually conduct council business, other than committee assignments on the 8th, but we're not planning to at this point. But it is a duly-nosed meeting, and we might actually conduct business. Would you now please all stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
Aye. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
April Barker.
Here.
Dan Hamel.
Here.
Jean Knutson.
Here.
Michael Lelequest.
Here.
Roxanne Murphy.
Here.
Pinky Vargas.
Here.
Terry Bornham.
Here.
Thank you. We now go to -- we have no public hearings tonight, and we go straight to our 15-minute public comment period. Terry, is there a sign-in sheet? So you will have three minutes to speak to the City Council as a whole about something that you think that we need to hear about. We'll have a timer going over here. There will be a little bell will go off. You have 30 seconds. Your time's out, and you have 30 seconds to wrap up your comments. This evening, we have, it looks like, six people signed up, three minutes each. Would Cheryl Crooks, please, come forward. You're first to speak, followed by Orin O'Neill. Yeah, come over here to this stand, and the microphone should be on.
I get to stand. Great, I'm better at standing, thank you.
Thanks, Cheryl.
My name is Cheryl Crooks, and I am here on behalf of Cascadia International Women's Film Festival this evening, which I am Executive Director. Here purely for informational reasons, I wanted to let the City Council know about what the festival is doing and make you aware of the festival, if you aren't already. We are only one of two in the United States that is exclusively dedicated to showcasing the films of women directors. We had our first festival last April. We showed 24 films at the Pickford. They were all curated films, which means they were selected, they weren't submitted, from 11 countries, and we had 11 directors attending the festival, some of whom came from as far away as Russia and Australia to be here for that event. In October, we participated in the Pickford's annual October Festival, and we showed two documentaries directed by women then. Both of those films sold out, and people, I understand, are still coming to the Pickford asking when one of them is coming back, and we may, in fact, bring it back for an encore presentation. We're now working on our second festival, which is going to be April 12th to the 15th. Write those dates down. We're selecting films now, and we're getting very close to having our final films. This year, we've been very fortunate in that we have more films than we have spots to show. We had a lot of films last year, but this year, the films are so excellent, it's very difficult for us to narrow it down. We also have an honored guest speaker who is coming. Her name is Cheryl Boone Isaacs. She is the immediate past President of the Academy of Motion Picture Arts and Sciences from Los Angeles. She is the first African-American to ever serve in that office, and only the third woman. These are the -- the Academy is the one that hands out the Oscars, and she will be here giving a speech for us, probably talking about something to do with women in power in the film industry, I would guess. There has never been a better time for a women's film festival, I think you'll agree. And as far as I'm concerned, there's never been a better place than Bellingham for a film festival. Through all of our social media marketing and the work that we've been doing, film centers in New York and Los Angeles are rapidly becoming aware of us. We have 30 first-round film reviewers located all over the world, so we're known now in Hong Kong, Paris, Rome, Boston, Denver. A lot of people are becoming rapidly aware. So I was just here tonight because I wanted to be sure that the Council was aware, and I wanted to thank you for the support that the Tourism Bureau gave us earlier this year on the $5,000 grant as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Cheryl. Orin O'Neill, you are next, followed by Ann Mackey.
Good evening. My name is Orin O'Neill. I live on the South Side, near Seahom Village. I would like to call Council's attention to the condition of the striping on the pavement of most of the city's arterials and streets, or in most cases, the lack thereof. I remember several years ago, apparently, there was a shortage of reflectorized paint, and so the restriping of the streets was put off, but that was a long time ago, and really, on many streets, it is very difficult to see where exactly you're supposed to be, where the lanes are, where the curbs are, things like that. And I would simply like to call the Council's attention to this and ask for action. Thank you.
Thank you, Orin. Ann Mackey, you are next, followed by Jill McIntyre.
Thank you, Council. My name is Ann Mackey, and I'm a member of the Bellingham Neighborhood Coalition. It's very hard to unring a bell, especially when the bell is displayed on the front lawn of City Hall. Someone on the Council, or perhaps all of you, helped to make this encampment possible. It's well-planned, with porta-potties, tents, soup kitchens, perhaps power cords. But after listening to your afternoon meeting today, I'm getting the impression that the event has worn out its welcome. It's not going to be easy to unring the bell. Like many things, this Council seems to be engaged in, it's unclear to me what your end goal really is. Was this encampment to bring a focus on homeless crisis? It certainly is serving to illustrate to the citizens that you do not have a solution figured out, nor have you managed to bring powerful players in our city together to work on a community solution. Peace Health has an empty hospital at the old State Luke site. Albertson's has an empty grocery store in Birchwood. Max Motel on Samish Island is empty and shuttered because of their licensing violations. We might not totally agree on what the solutions to homelessness in Bellingham might be, but we can all agree on one thing: encampments are not the answer. Why isn't the Council putting its efforts into getting state funding for the Aloha Motel project? Perhaps you are, but it's not apparent, and that's something you might actually have an impact on. Put the pressure on our legislators to get a capital budget done, so we can get state funds to back up the $1.59 million we already invested in purchasing the Aloha Motel site. Those funds came from tax-paying citizens, homeowners. Why isn't the Council working on formation of public-private partnerships to develop Samish Way Urban Village, or any of the other urban villages in our city? No, instead, you are distracted by a series of what I believe are non-solutions. Number one, forcing backyard cottages into single-family neighborhoods, a sure way to fire up resistance for any future home fund levy. And evidence from Portland tells us that these cost between $50,000 and $80,000 to build. Secondly, you're jumping on this tiny home bandwagon, what appears to be a marketing fad, that has not been proven as a viable solution to housing affordability. Third, failure to enforce current zoning and density rules so that we can get away from illegal rooming houses that are charging $3,000 a month rent. Don't overfill, please, don't ballerize Bellingham, that's our campaign, and get back to the serious business of creating housing solutions, real solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Jill, you're next, followed by Nick Engelfried.
Hi, I'm Jill McIntyre-Witt. Thank you, City Council, for your interest in accepting the city's climate plan -- action plan update. I understand that the afternoon session, you took a look at it and noticed that there are some changes that could be made, so I would be fine with you not voting to push it forward. However, as a climate change educator, I've reviewed the plan, and the goals are not on track to provide a livable future. As stark as that sounds, the reality of the severity of the climate crisis has been spelled out, not just by the scientists over the years, but in plain view, with increasing fires, as you know, are currently relenting in California. My husband lost his family home in Santa Rosa, along with increased flooding and droughts globally. Yes, the goals in the new updated plan are much too low and must be more ambitious. There is also no spelled-out mechanism to track or keep the city accountable for their action, which would be a great addition. Tough decisions are ahead, and financially, the city will need to create a budget for climate action. I'm aware that there will be state legislation that will come up in the new year to allow for cities to put forward measures or bonds to create climate action funds, so that's something to look forward to. I came to the City Council June 5th and talked about this very subject, and commended you on your 7-0 vote, and the Mayor signing on to the National Movement for Cities to commit that we're still in the Paris Agreement. I also asked if we could act swiftly and create a citizen climate justice committee to review the climate action plan update, and that didn't happen. So six months later now, I'm again recommending forming a citizen climate justice committee to help create revisions that put us on a target to 100% fossil-free Bellingham by 2030 in a just and equitable way. This is an effort across the country for cities to make commitments to 100% renewable. There are around 70 cities so far that have done this, and I've already started a group of people to look at these 70 resolutions, so we can put 1/4 to the city in the coming year. And Edmonds is the first and only city in Washington to do this. There's no reason why Bellingham shouldn't be on this list. This is doable for our city. The fossil-free Bellingham Resolution Campaign will launch in the new year, and anyone interested in supporting this can find us on Facebook at 350 Bellingham. We don't have time to create an updated plan -- update plans that don't put us on a path for livable future. It just kicks the problem down the road. And we know the county and the city both are working on this, and we need to take swift action, and I look forward to working with you on this. If anyone would like to understand further about this issue, please look at climatejusticenow.earth, my master's project, and learn about climate justice. There's a free downloadable Climate Just Field Manual. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jill. And Nick Engelfield -- Engelfried, sorry. Get that right, Nick. And then after that, Amy Glasser will be our last speaker.
Hi, I'm Nick Engelfried. No worries, my last name is hard to pronounce. I live at 1330 Humboldt Street, and I'm also here to speak to the ongoing effort around the Climate Action Plan and say that, like Jill, I definitely support this effort and hope it will continue to move forward, but would like to see the goals in the plan updated to become more ambitious, more aggressive, and to make sure that there's funding in place to make sure that we're actually able to implement these goals and move our community towards a lower-carbon future. I think we've all seen this year maybe more clearly than ever before what the impacts of climate change are already all across the country and here in the Northwest, from hurricanes in the Gulf to wildfires all over the West, including here in Washington. And then more locally, we have our environment and economy is affected by issues like ocean acidification in Bellingham Bay and surrounding waters, and the impact that that's having on our shellfish industry, to take just one example. So I do wholeheartedly support the effort to update the Climate Action Plan, but I feel that the goals in it need to be ramped up to be more in line with what scientists are saying we need to do to combat climate change and get us on track to 100% clean energy by 2030. So I look forward to seeing this process move forward and continuing to engage with it, along with others. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Amy, you are next.
Amy Glasser, Bellingham, Washington. At least one person has already died of exposure in our city, and I'm guessing a lot of people in this room don't even know, because the Bellingham Herald didn't even cover it. It was Skagit that covered a woman who died of exposure near the I-5 overpass on Bakerview. I believe there were two other people who died, possibly in a car, but it's hard to find out, because nobody's covering it. These are our citizens, and they're already dying of exposure. The camp outside was not organized by the Council, although the Council has been supportive, and the Mayor has been supportive, and has allowed us to be out there and to demonstrate what we need to be taking care of. So it isn't a matter of the Council doing it and not having a plan. Homes Now, Not Later organized this, and they have a plan. The plan has already been discussed this afternoon, and was discussed by you guys. I have no idea what happened in the meetings, but what I just want to do is make sure that the things that need to happen don't get lost in meetings and meetings and meetings. Needless to say, a tiny home project is not the answer to everything, but it is the answer to some of the people there who can't live with others. If you've walked through that camp, you know there's people there who will not make it in apartments. They won't make it with people in a room right next door. They have major mental illness. When they try to build that big jail with 32 mental health beds, it's a joke. 85%, I would say at least, of the people out on the streets have mental illness resulting in substance abuse, and they're not healthy, and they're not doing well. But out there, they're doing better than they ever have, and that's why your shelter, your drop-in center, doesn't have as many people there. Because out there, on the street, in tents, are people who are warm and safe, and there's no bugs that are in our tents, and there's no people trying to rape them, and there's no people trying to hurt them, and we have security, and we have a Mayor of our area, and we have a security officer, and we have a food service manager, and we have a cleanup-maintenance man, and we have everything that a small community needs. And what I'm hoping is that you guys could give us the path to do one tiny home project, I'm begging you. Four houses, one service building, four of our healthiest people to show you that the people out there are not all as ill as I talk about. Some just don't have money for first-last-month deposit, maybe they got an eviction, maybe they don't have rental history, of which you don't have when you're homeless, yet you have to have it to get into a subsidized apartment. These are the people that I hope we can maybe do in this small home project. Barry Buchanan, this afternoon, toured the camp and said that we should be working together, and we should come up with a half-acre plot that the city and the county works together to provide us with, so we can make a camp that's safe. Three-month project. We will show you that we can do it for barely no money, and it doesn't need millions. We don't want a 200-bed shelter, no one there will go to it. It's not safe for people, and it won't be if it's a low barrier. Oh, God.
Sorry, Amy, time.
There's one more woman who didn't see the sign-up sheet, and please, let me stay here.
Go ahead, this will be our last speaker of the night.
Hi, I just want to say something. My name is Hillary Cole. I live in Bellingham. This homeless camp outside this building has made me realize how privileged I am. I can go to sleep without worrying if someone's going to steal my stuff, or get hurt by someone out to do harm, or abruptly woken up by the police in order to get along. I can use a heater to make my bathroom -- my bedroom warm. I can use a private bathroom. I can sleep on clean sheets, take a shower, and not be so cold I can't go to sleep. These are just some of the things we who live in a house take for granted. I urge you to do everything you can to make these people's lives tolerable, and to establish a place for them to form a community within our larger community.
Thank you very much. We will now go on to reports of our regularly-scheduled standing committees. The first committee, which met this afternoon, was the Justice Committee. April Barker is the Chair.
Thank you. We initially had two items. One of them, presentation by the Office of Civil Legal Aid, was postponed until January. So the only item that we discussed today was a draft resolution of guiding principles for justice and justice-related systems. This is a conversation, this was our third meeting, on these guiding principles. We made one small amendment to the original draft that was in the packet, and that would make number three, say, ensure victim and community harm reduction. With that, it actually sailed through a lot faster than I thought, but I think it's when we take those couple of hours prior to, to really go through this with community members, staff, and council members, we typically get a pretty good result. So with that, we had a unanimous recommendation for the Council to approve the guiding principles for justice and justice-related decisions, as I mentioned the amendment, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion before us to approve the resolution entitled Guiding Principles for Justice and Justice-Related Decisions, consisting of 12 principles. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
And with that, I did want to thank the Mayor. She, as well as other council members, and I mentioned other community members, gave excellent ability, I think, to really parse down from where I started. So, thank you, Mayor Kelly, and I know it was a quick turnaround, but I do appreciate your recommendations. And end of committee.
Thank you, April. The next committee, which met, was Public Works and Public Safety, chaired by Councilwoman Terry Bornham.
Thank you, Michael. We had a busy committee today. We had seven items on the agenda. The first was inter-local agreement for life support services. Upon the passing of a county-wide emergency medical services, EMS levy, in November 2016, staff from the city and county have developed a new inter-local agreement for the provision of advanced life support services, the ALS. This new contract reflects changes in funding brought about by the EMS levy and will replace the previous ALS contract. Staff is seeking Council authorization for the Mayor to enter into the ILA. Committee recommended approval, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion before us to approve the inter-local agreement for advanced life support systems, otherwise known as EMS. Fiscal impact for this past year regurgitively, about $6.1 million in revenue for services we provide to the county, and next year, $6.3 million for services we provide to the county. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Please authorize, please sign the contract.
The next item was the bid for asphalt for streets. The annual asphalt pavement repair contract is designed to provide a means and method for the multiple city departments to repair asphalt, pavement, sidewalks, roads, alleys, and structures as needed to maintain the city's infrastructure. The project was bid for one year, with an option to extend for up to five years. Four bids were opened November 20, 2017. The apparent low bidder is Western Refinery Services, Inc., from Ferndale, Washington, for $432,400. Public Works is recommending the award of the bid, and the committee recommended approval, and I so move.
Okay. All right, we have a motion before us to bid -- award the bid for asphalt for streets to Western Refinery Services. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
Okay, the next item was very similar. Let me see, wait a minute. Ash, that was -- oops, I got the wrong one here. Okay. Yeah, this one was the bid-award for cement for streets bid. The annual cement concrete repair contract is designed to provide a means and method for the multiple city departments to repair cement, concrete, sidewalks, roads, and structures as needed to maintain the city's infrastructure. The contract is also used to remove and replace sidewalk sections that may become safety hazards or fall out of compliance with Americans with Disability Act, the ADA standards. The project was bid for one year, with an option to extend for up to five years. Two bids were opened on November 20, 2017. The apparent low bidder is Connor Up Construction LLC, from Stanwood, Washington, for $789,100. Public Works is recommending the award of the bid. The committee recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion before us to award the bid for cement for sidewalks, streets, and similar projects to Connor Up Construction. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
Okay, the next was the return-activated sludge, the RAS Pipeline Repair Update at Post Point. On May 5, 2017, at 1:30 AM, the support system holding the return-activated sludge pipeline failed, dropping the pipe from the ceiling in the pipe gallery and permanently damaging the pipe at Post Point Wastewater Treatment Plant. On November 9, 2017, the crews finalized substantial replacement of the RAS pipe pipeline, and plant staff placed the RAS pipe back in service. Staff provided an update on the repairs, identified improvements made during the repair process, and provided an overview analysis on the cause of failure. This was for information only. The next item was Water District 7 Request for Service for Gradual Valley 2 Short Plat. The proponents of this asked that this be delayed until the second meeting in January, so it was pulled from our agenda. No action was taken. The next item was a bid-award for the Columbia Neighborhood Water Quality Improvements and Storm Drain Maintenance Project. The Columbia Neighborhood Water Quality Improvements and Storm Drain Maintenance Project involves installation of 10 bio-infiltration basins, rehabilitation of storm mains, catch basins, and manholes, and installation of three stormwater filters to treat approximately 80 acres of runoff from the Columbia Neighborhood. The city received 13 bids, which were publicly opened on November 29, 2017. Faber Construction Corp. was the responsible bidder, who submitted the lowest responsive bid of $1,778,643, including any applicable Washington state sales or use tax. The engineer's estimate was $2,817,85. The money for this came from grants, loans, and from funds from the Stormwater District. The committee recommended awarding this bid, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion before us to award the bid for the Columbia Neighborhood Water Quality Improvement and Storm Drain Maintenance Project to Faber Construction. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
The last item was a bid-award for Mahogany Avenue Improvements. The Mahogany Avenue Improvements involved 3,200 linear feet of new roadway between Pacific Highway and Northwest Avenue. The project includes installation of municipal utilities, new signal Avenue. The project includes installation of municipal utilities, new signalized intersections of Arctic and Mahogany, and new signalized intersections at Mahogany and Northwest Avenue. The city received six bids, which were publicly opened on November 28. Strider Construction was the responsible bidder who submitted the lowest responsive bid of $5,554,501, again, $5,554,501.47. These big numbers, they get to you after a while. Including any applicable Washington state sales or use tax. The engineer's estimate was $6,470,182.33. A bid protest was received and rejected for the reasons explained in the attached correspondence. This has been a project that has been delayed for a long time because of a lot of different obstacles, so it was really nice to see this finally come forward. The committee recommended approval, and I so move.
Second. We have a motion to award the bid for construction of Mahogany Avenue to, was it Strider Construction this time? Strider Construction? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
End of committee.
Thanks so much, Terry. Parks and Recreation was the next committee to meet. April Barker chairs that committee.
All right, thank you, Council President. We had two items in committee. The first was an update on proposal to reduce percent value for park impact fees. Park impact fees were implemented in the city of Bellingham in 2007, and this was the first review. After extensive research and analysis, staff recommended a simple reduction in assessment from 35% to 31%. This would decrease parks' impact fees for single-family and multifamily. They asked the committee for direction, and direction was given to continue in this direction, work with other departments to see if there are any self-imposed barriers to the current implementation for housing, as well as consider triggers or regular review. Staff suggested that potentially it could be every pro-plan cycle that we could review the impact fee. No action was taken beyond just the providing direction. The second item was presentation of Level of Service Analysis for Parks and Recreation. During our last comprehensive plan, council gave strong recommendations and policy direction to develop level of service in looking at distribution of parks, equity of parks, quality, quantity, and maintenance of parks. So it was a really large presentation today, so I would suggest, it's like that thick of a packet. So I would suggest if you want to learn more about that, that you can either email the city council, and we can give you the link, or you can go directly to the webpage and look for the link there. That was for information only. There was no action taken, and that's end of committee.
Thank you, April. We're now going to the final committee, which was Committee of the Whole. We had four scheduled items. The first is consideration of a request to initiate the review process for potential annexation of approximately 65 acres located in Bellingham's northern urban growth area, known as the Mount Baker Highway-Britten Road Annexation. Under state law, the city council must hold a meeting to determine whether or not to initiate the review process for the proposed annexation, for which we received a petition. Ninety percent of the residents in the area have signed that petition or have a no-opposition agreement standing in place. The council had to make, reach a determination, first of all, whether or not to accept, reject, or geographically modify the proposed annexation boundaries. There was a request submitted after the annexation proposal to expand the boundary slightly, and this afternoon, the council moved to process or review the larger area for possible annexation. And then, we also, there was a motion made this afternoon to pass a resolution to initiate the review process for the entire area, and also to simultaneously review the zoning regulations, and perform a financial analysis, and bring that forward at a future date for consideration. The resolution was recommended unanimously, and I so move. We have a motion before us to pass the resolution to initiate the review process for potential annexation. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. So this is just consideration. That'll come forward at a future date before any annexation occurs. The next item on our agenda was consideration in ordinance adopting a limited amendment to the city's shoreline master program. Back in 2013, I believe it was, the city proposed a limited amendment to its shoreline master program that redesignates the recreational use subarea to, which is around the log pond, to shoreline mixed use within the waterfront district shoreline designation. This area is outside of the area being considered for the downtown waterfront area for redevelopment. It's for the south. This also, this amendment also creates an allowance for standalone non-water surrounded uses in the log pond subarea only, still outside, nothing buildable within the 50-foot buffer or 25 further barrier. It also clarifies which portions of the shoreline mixed use subarea allow residential uses. The Department of Ecology reviewed the city's proposed changes that were submitted, as I said, several years ago, and has issued recommended changes to the proposed amendments in order for DOT to, DOE, Department of Ecology, to approve it. Staff recommends the city council accept the DOE's recommendations, and direct staff to send an acceptance letter, and also to pass the first and second reading of the ordinance to actually make those changes. This afternoon, the Committee of the Whole recommended adopting the ordinance and indeed sending the acceptance letter, and I so move. Second. We have a motion before us to pass the ordinance adopting limited amendments to the city's shoreline master program, and send a letter of acceptance to Department of Ecology. Any discussion?
Nothing.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes unanimously. The fourth item under the Committee of the Whole was... An update on the 20, or council item on the Climate Action Plan 2017 update. The city is updating its 2007 Climate Action Plan to guide the next phase of emission reduction actions for both city government and the community that we serve. The 2017 Climate Action Plan update summarizes actions taking implements the previous Climate Action Plan, reviews progress towards previously established reduction goals, and establishes future emission reduction goals, and finally identifies additional measures that will further reduce emissions. Staff provided us with an overview of the Climate Action Plan, as well as studies on the, had the previous action plan, and answered our questions. There was a resolution attached in our packet to adopt the 2017 Action Plan. However, the Committee of the Whole this afternoon took a vote to defer adoption of the Climate Action Plan. There were a couple of issues raised with regard to tracking and accountability, public process, and as we heard tonight, maybe some questions about the goals that were set. We will be reviewing that sometime early in the next year, probably the second meeting in January, when everything's coming back. And the full report can be found online on the city's website. It's about a 100-page document. So that was the end of that. And then, finally, we have no meeting minutes to approve, so we'll move on to old and new business. Gene?
I'll just be brief. This is my annual holiday farewell. I want to thank you, Michael, for your job as council president. I think you deserve a round of applause. And to the mayor and the staff, thank you for another great year, and I look forward to 2018.
That's it. Thank you, Gene. Pinky?
Today marks the final session of completing a four-year term for me, so I'm very excited that this means I actually completed a four-year term, and I just want to say what an honor it's been to serve the city of Bellingham and to be part of this council, and to work with such amazing staff at the city, and with a wonderful mayor. So I just wanted to say thanks to everybody, and happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Thank you, Pinky. This afternoon, I mentioned that last week, myself, Dan, and the mayor attended the first meeting of the county's Homeless Strategies Work Group, and I also like to indicate that that's not the only thing the city has been doing and is doing on homelessness. And this afternoon, the mayor gave a brief report on the homeless demonstration, and her attempts to bring them under the permitted system, rather than have them just simply be there, their rules to follow, if indeed they do want to use public property for demonstration purposes. I don't know if you want to say anything more on that, Kelly, or for...
No, I think we discussed it pretty thoroughly this afternoon. I got the direction that I needed, and so thank you. I have an update on some of our shelter stuff that I'll give during our mayor, my mayor's report.
Okay. Anything else under old and new? April?
Yes, thank you to council and staff. I'm the baby of the bunch. This is two years for me, so I feel like I'm no longer drinking from a fire hose, kind of, but I have a feeling 2018 is going to shock me again. So I do want to thank the mayor for letting me fill in for her for the Jingle Bell Run. It's an event that is near and dear to my heart because it's about raising funds for curing arthritis. And I think most of you know that my son was diagnosed with arthritis at the age of two, but has been in remission since, so about the age of five. But it's events like these that bring awareness, but also raise money for the number-one cause for disability in America. So it, the community support for it was amazing, and that morning, I haven't checked the number since, but that morning, Bellingham was fifth in the nation for the amount of money raised for just the Jingle Bell Run. So it was really exciting, the amount of people. It was a diverse group of people, in age, race, anything you could even want, and it was just a lovely day. So I'm sorry you weren't able to attend, but it was really special to me that I got to go and welcome people, so thank you.
Thank you, April. Anything else under old and new? Okay, we'll go on to executive session report. This afternoon, we had one executive session item. It was to discuss a litigation matter, Parrott versus the City of Bellingham. Staff provided information on an ongoing litigation matter. It was for information and discussion only. Council took no action. Mayor's report.
Okay. I just wanted to give you an update on our shelter, the proposed shelter that we're pursuing. The Lighthouse Mission Ministries continues to operate the Day Center and the Drop-In Center. This winter, because of the number of people that are attempting to be housed in the shelter and in the drop-in center, the Fountain Community Church and other partner churches are assisting the Lighthouse Mission Ministries in housing women and children in their, in their church for, let's see, what does it say? From December 1st through the end of February. So they've taken on a big commitment. It frees up space, shelter space for others that want to come inside. And we're assisting them, the city, we are assisting them by helping pay for a volunteer coordinator and purchasing supplies. So we have expanded our capacity, and they had had over 140 volunteers that had signed up to help, so to do something really concrete. And that's pretty amazing in our community, and I want to thank all the volunteers who were willing to do that. And we're doing it because the Lighthouse Mission has had to turn people away that want to come in. There'll be nearly 200 beds available for those who need this winter between the different facilities, and we're still committed to finding a site for the low-barrier shelter. So I'd like to thank the Fountain Community Church, the Lighthouse Mission, our many partner churches, and also, I'd like to thank the Homes Now Not Later Organization for heightening the awareness of homelessness in our community, to people that maybe don't see, don't see what we all see. So I want to thank them too, for doing their best to try to move this issue forward. I have people that, oh, wait, one more thing. The eighth, when we have, you have the reorganization meeting, we had a couple information-only presentations. One on the status of the RFA discussions, the Regional Fire Authority discussions, which would not be very long. The other one was a status on the sustainable budgeting analysis is being done, and I wondered if either one of those, you'd like us to write up an agenda bill so that we could cut another issue off, even though you're going to be doing your reorganization.
Was the council's pleasure.
Better that than the next meeting, which seems like...
Okay. Information-only items in both those cases. The Regional Fire Authority is a discussion we've been having about potentially capping off our fire department, having joined the fire district, provide the same services under a different organizational framework, and then the other item, information was...
Well, we were only going to do one. So the Regional Fire Authority discussion would be a little more concise, so maybe that's a better one to do. And then we'll have more time to discuss the sustainable budgeting, unless you want to do both of them.
How much of, how much time are you considering for that second item?
Well, why don't we check the time that we, that it will take, and then if we think that it's 10 or 15 minutes, I'm told.
Okay, so would we schedule those probably right after, as the first items of business, after the reorganizational meeting?
Yes.
We come back in here, so they could be taped?
Um, would we hold those back in this room, or continue in the mayor's boardroom?
The RFA, I'm sure, would be helpful to be able to direct people back to, to understand.
Okay, I guess we'll come in here for about a half hour, then after we finish our reorg meeting. So the reorg might go from 1 till 2-ish, and then come in here around 2 or so. I'll leave it up to the, no, I should, I didn't have to do that, scheduling that one, not the new president. Okay, we'll schedule that for the first meeting in January. Okay.
Got one more meeting.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
I got to schedule at least the first meeting, right?
Right.
Okay, we'll schedule both of those.
All right. Thank you very much. So the things that I need approval for are appointment of Ellie Price and Chris Suncardi to the Transportation Commission.
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve the appointments of Ellie Price and of Chris Suncardi to the Transportation Commission. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, they are both approved.
And then the other two are for information only. A reappointment of Bowler Smith and Ross Greer to the Bellingham Cities Board, and an appointment of Louise Bjornson, a name unknown to all of us, of course.
Do you think she's qualified?
Yeah, I think she probably is.
It's a good place to start, if you want to get into politics.
To the Mayor's Neighborhood Advisory Commission.
Thank you. Consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We have two ordinances for final consideration.
Agenda Bill 21801, in an ordinance of the City of Bellingham, Washington, amending the 2017-2018 biennial budget, increasing revenues and expenditures in the Gulf Fund.
Move third and final. Second. The motion, roll call, please.
April Barker?
Aye.
Terry Barnaman?
Aye.
Dan Hamel?
Aye.
Jane Knutson?
Aye.
Michael Lelequest?
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy?
Aye.
Pinky Vargas?
Aye.
Ordinance passes, 7-0. Agenda Bill 21787, in ordinance of the City of Bellingham, Washington, amending the 2017-2018 biennial budget, providing for adoption of the mid-biennial adjustments to the biennial budget pursuant to the terms of RCW 35.345.130.
Third and final. Second. We have a motion for third and final. Roll call, please.
Terry Barnaman?
Aye.
Dan Hamel?
Aye.
Jane Knutson?
Aye.
Michael Lelequest?
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy?
Aye.
Pinky Vargas?
Aye.
April Barker?
All right.
Ordinance passes, 7-0.
Is there any further business before the Bellingham City Council?
Were we supposed to do a second reading of the, the letter that Steve brought forward? Never mind. I thought it said first and second reading, so I just wanted to make sure...
That's, that's the ordinance, first and second reading.
So we're good?
That's taken care of. Okay, thank you. That's the final meeting for the year 2017-2018. Happy holidays and happy new year to everyone. We are adjourned.